Calling the May 14th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's see. Roll call. Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Feng.
Here.
Commissioner Wong.
Here.
Commissioner Saxina.
Here.
Commissioner Takahashi.
Here.
All right. We have everybody here. First item, approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the draft minutes of April 23rd, 2019? And I think Kitty, you were asking if whether you could...
Okay.
You just abstain. Anybody have any corrections, changes to what we stated in the minutes in terms of what was recommended? Nope? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I will reapprove the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. On favor? Well, vote. That's easier. All right. There we go. All right. Minutes are approved, 4, 0, 1, with one abstention. Okay. Let's do oral communications. Any cards? Jennifer Griffin.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Jennifer Griffin. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the housing bills that have come through California. That would be SB 50 and 330 that are currently being considered right now, which would remove the R1 ordinance for all residences in California. I was quite surprised to see that there is another bill similar to this. It's Oregon House Bill 2001 that was introduced in Portland in January and has now hit ways and means. And it would remove the R1 ordinance off of all residents in Oregon in cities over 10,000 in population. This would be devastating for the city of Portland. Portland is mainly composed of old neighborhoods of small lots. We're talking about 5,000 square feet. And many of those neighborhoods go back to 1910, 1920. This would completely devastate and destroy the Reed College neighborhood. This is by Reed College, if anyone is familiar with that. It looks like Cambridge, England, around the university. I don't know if a lot of residents of Oregon even know that this bill has been passed. I mean, it hasn't been passed, but it was introduced. But it is even more complicated in Oregon because if you put in limits of 10,000 people per city, what happens when cities grow? You have a lot of small rural towns, too, of course, in Oregon. And what happens if they eventually hit, you know, five, 10 years from now? They start hitting the 5,000, 10,000. What happens if... Portland has annexed tremendous amounts of space around it in the last 20 years. They are actually allowed to annex more small towns. I think that this type of arbitrary... There makes no point to put 10,000 population for the whole state of Oregon. That makes no sense. It's one size is trying to fit all. Why not do 5,000? Why not do 50,000? This type of potential upzoning is... Makes it very questionable what some of these supposedly elected representatives are doing in Salem and Sacramento. And I believe that there's a similar type of bill going on in Washington State. Minneapolis just got rid of R1 zoning. We didn't elect those people. Why are they trying to do this for the whole state? This is where we need to look into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I believe that's House Bill 2001 in Oregon, for clarification. I'm reading this. I hope I say this correctly. Minnan for Wong family? Is that person here? Okay. Hopefully, I pronounced that correctly. If you're not, come back up. I think so. Is that you?
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Oh, good. There we go.
Hello? Okay. Okay. So, this is about issue about abatement and also the fair hearing. And we've been trying everything to comply. Actually, comply not just once, comply twice. And the first time, we built, got into the general rule. And that's everyone in the... All the areas, cities around here, told us to do. Then we actually, the only one, actually paid the city get permit, actually torn down, get all the confirmation many times and to rebuild it. And it costs $100,000, because we were typically targeted because grand sick, grandparents and their little grandchildren and the struggle of single parents get targeted. So, none of the people have ability, actually, have to even put up, put it down and have a little variation on it.
Can I step in real quick? Because I have a little bit of knowledge of this issue. Sure. So, what you're talking about is you put a shed in the back of your backyard.
Yeah.
You asked for a permit, or you asked if you needed a permit.
Yes.
And at some point in time, they told you no. You built something there.
Yeah.
And you have the situation where code enforcement is coming to you.
Yeah, sure.
Saying that you have a violation in your backyard. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to simplify for you, but keep going.
That's true. And then we get this hearing, actually, the person actually in charge of hearing with this, an officer of France. And actually, so according to the city rule, it doesn't matter, the municipal rule or Planning Commission rule, suppose have a fair person, also Planning Commission, also all council member appoint the people or panel. So, it's not the person's friend. So, he'll, of course, on his side uphold everything, disregarding the witness, disregarding the current picture, they use the old picture, old measurement, disregarding all the experts' measurements as well. So, we asked for the fair hearing. Last time, we were talking to you, actually. Very appreciate for the compassionate council member, Planning Commissioner. And you were saying, maybe it's a planning issue or council issue. So, we just want to know which one this one is. And because if it's in coenforcement, because we were informed the way we suppose build that time and by the planning officer. So, if there's a coagreement on that, and we didn't know that time, so we really definitely need your guys to looking to that as well.
I just have a question for staff, interim director Fu. What is... What happens when you build something and after the fact that you have a code enforcement issue? Where does that typically go to? Where can we direct our resident here?
Yeah. It's... You can retroactively seek for a building permit, the same process of building for a new building, right? Retroactively, you seek for a building permit and we evaluate the project, evaluate against the planning code, setbacks, height, and all that. If it's a violation, if it's a complaint, then we'll have code enforcement, we'll present and witness the violation, document the violation, go through the violation process, the noticing process, and eventually end up in citation. And the property owner has the right to appeal that citation, which I believe is what this process is currently going under. I don't believe we received the results of the appeal yet, but that would be the standard process.
Okay. All right. Hope that helps you there.
No, quite, because we were saying, the meeting, he was saying he didn't know the results. Because this meeting, actually, is not legal, it's not fair. So, we... And we need to have a fair meeting with the commission and the Planning Commission and next with council. So, we need to start with properly. So, that's another thing we request as well.
I'm not sure what to do with this now, but it's open remarks, and I'll get back to you and figure out what the right approach is.
Okay. Get back to us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Janet Van Zuren. I hope I pronounced that properly. Van Zuren or Zuren?
Hi. It's Van Zoren. Can I come up to the dais and give you these papers?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. It's nice to be here with you this evening. As you know, I've been trying very hard over the last few years to get some units of ELI housing for people with developmental disabilities. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you in the near future to help make that possible. There's been some confusion about just what it is that Housing Choices does. And so, I thought that a good way to get started with us working on this together to try to figure out how to achieve this would be to give you some better indication, which I've written on this top paper, of what it is that we do. Some people think we are a developer. No, we're not a developer. We work with the developers. And we do a lot of different kinds of things. I'll just mention a few very briefly here. The main three things that we do is that we advocate for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We educate communities, city governments, staff, and developers about what the needs are and how they can be achieved. And we help affordable housing developers work through the myriad of potential funding resources and so forth. And then after the housing is developed, we work closely with the residents that have been housed. And with financing from the San Andreas Regional Center, who gets their monies from the Department of Developmental Services, we provide services to the residents to make sure that they are able to handle being a resident in an apartment complex. And if they're short on services, then we advocate for them to get the services they need to make it a workable situation for everybody. So, that's very, in a nutshell, what we do. And there's more detail in here, and I hope that you'll read it. I also noticed online, Mr. Wang, that you were asked, you were saying that now we need to find some affordable housing developers. You'll see in the latter pages here, starting on page four, all of the developers that we've worked with. And I gave you a quickie list. That separate page in the back is a list of affordable housing developers that we've partnered with and had very successful projects with. There are a lot of different ways that the Planning Commission can help us. The first is that we desperately need to find some property. So, if any of you can help us find some property, we have developers who are ready, willing, and able to work with us. And that will be step one. And step two is that there are a lot of little things that we could tweak in the way things are done within the city that would help for things to go more smoothly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quick question for you, though. Is it just apartments, but it's also homes as well, right? You can also do residential homes?
Yes. Mostly, we do apartments, but we also have some co-ops where we have a residential home and people rent the bedrooms in the home. And then they share the common space. And we help coordinate that so that, you know, there aren't any big fights about who does what or who's carrying their share of the load. And the ones we've had have been very, very successful.
Please feel free to send the developer contacts to my email address. I'd love to talk to them.
The developer contacts?
I'll reach out to them as well, so.
Oh, okay.
The contacts you put on page four. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Yes, I'll ask Jen Stokely to do that for me, because she has that information. Thank you. Any other questions? Kitty?
Well, I was wondering if during our discussion about our objective standards, if we might be able to... If we're touching on this issue, if we might be able to bring Janet back to answer some questions.
Thank you. I'd be happy to do that.
Thought one of these will be good.
I'm not quite sure at this point what I would say, but I'll just fill one out anyway, and then I can come to the mic and you can ask me whatever you want. How about that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Warren.
Hi. So, I walked in the middle of Janet's, what she was sharing with you, but I just wanted to add that I was one of the lucky ones that learned about and was able to attend a little site visit that she helped coordinate. And Commissioner Feng was there for part of the site visit, but it was very... It was good. We went to an apartment style, and then we also went to a residential home. And the home had been donated by the owner. That's how that came about. Wish we could have more of those, but we already had a similar situation in Cupertino and a couple of places, but it's a more private enterprise, and so people don't know about it. Anyway, it was... She's doing what she can to reach out and spread the word and educate, and it was very helpful. And I was happy to be part of it.
Okay. Any more oral communications? Are there any written communications we need to go through?
We do have one written communication. You don't need to go through it, but you've received it in the mail, and it's listed as... It's in front of you in the dais.
Tonight, cancel Planning Commission meeting, May 14th through 1645. All right. That's what it is. And I think we got something else from Lisa in the email as well, in terms of... That's for another part of this. Okay. All right. Old business. Number two. Study session to create a list of objective standards, topics as suggested by the Planning Commission and the public. And I believe what we want to do with this is to continue to get public input in this session and not necessarily prioritize the meetings. Is that correct? I'm checking with our attorney. Is that correct, Joseph? Seth?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. Good. Just making sure we're doing the right thing here. All right. So, the idea here, this could be a very fast meeting. We have Commissioner Feng's list. We've got Commissioner Moore's list. We have a number of emails from the public. We just got one from one of our residents, Lisa Warren. Any other things anybody here wants to add as commissioners to this list? And of course, we'll be soliciting input as well. Commissioner Moore, go ahead. Jump in.
Okay. I'd like to see the sizes of the units in a development specified. So, for instance, we've had a fairly large recent development, which was saying that their average unit size was 1,250 square feet. So, if a project is... Simply has a number of residential units in the housing element, we don't really know how large it's going to end up being.
Could be 500 square feet, could be 1,000, could be 2,000.
Exactly. So, if there was some way that we can have some specification around that, I don't know how that would happen, but I'd like to see that. Back in the 2014 General Plan EIR, they addressed the density bonus ordinance. And it said that they were going to be changing the Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 19.56. And under the proposed project, which was the entire general plan, "The city will revise Chapter 19.56 Density Bonus to reflect requirements in state law and ensure consistency with Housing Element Program 6, Residential Housing Mitigation Program. The updated Density Bonus Ordinance will identify the regulatory concessions and incentives that may be considered by the city in conjunction with a density bonus project. Height increases will not be considered as part of the incentives, however." And in the municipal code, that was never codified. So, I'd like to see that put in, if possible. Looked like they... The city council asked for it. And if it's not, why not? Also, HCD had requirements for streamlining that were added in November of 2018 for the SB 35 guidelines. And in there, under Section 300, Local Government Responsibility subdivision A, "A local government that has been designated as subject to the streamlined ministerial approval process by the department shall provide information in a manner readily accessible to the general public about the locality's process for applying and receiving ministerial approval, materials required for an application as defined in Section 102B, and relevant objective standards to be used to evaluate the application. The information provided may include reference documents and lists of other information needed to enable the local government to determine if the application is consistent with objective standards, consistent with Section 102 subdivision B. This can be through the use of checklists, maps, diagrams, flow charts, or other formats." So, it looks like this is a requirement that we need to do, that we need to probably have this on our website so that people can find out what our requirements are. And, you know, we're still subject to any future SB 35 projects. So, that's kind of important. And right now, we're sitting with about 1,000 approved units and including SB 35 Valco, that's another 2,402. So, we're at over 3,400 approved units, and yet, we are still... Because there's been no permits pulled, we are still subject to SB 35 and these new housing bills, which are coming down the pipeline, which is... It's pretty incredible. And let's see. I think that's all of it. So, I... My notes that were online included comments made by the public. And there was one talking about the general plan being a fictitious general plan on the website, that it was never reviewed by city council. So, I'd like to know a little bit more about that. It's my understanding that our authentic general plans include the resolution from December of 2014. And then there was a following one in October of 2015, which was an amendment. And then, when I went to go look at the 2014 one, it was missing Chapter 4, the housing element. And that was adopted in May of 2015. So, I think if this is... If this is correct, that we, you know, that we have a fictitious general plan, that the real one is actually those three parts. And I don't... I don't know how to have that fixed, if it does need fixing. But it looks like our general plan really sits in three locations.
Yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. These are being captured. Anybody else want to add something? Any other things for objective standards that you heard from residents, from other input, emails, process? Okay. You don't have to read the ones that you submitted, so if you've got anything new. Here we go. Here, Mike.
You guys can comment. You know, I do have some comments on the things that I sent in, but, you know, if you guys want to go first, it's...
Yeah. I mean, I would add one that I'm looking at right now, and it probably may need a little more review, but I'm looking at how we calculate net lot calculations for FAR. I think it's kind of interesting that we are the only city in the Santa Clara County that actually takes out water easements from your net lot calculations, which is kind of interesting. So, it's just something I would add to the list and see where that goes.
I don't have anything to add.
So, I guess... I guess I just wanted to, you know, I had a... I did submit a list, a written list. I think that a lot of... In putting that list together, I was thinking about, you know, in the future here. We're halfway through the current RENA cycle. And so, four years out, we'll get a new RENA allocation. Meeting that RENA allocation, you know, you can assume that it would be similar to the kind of numbers that we're talking about today. Today's RENA, the current RENA is 1,064 units, of which, you know, the allocation is set 70 percent, about 70 or 80 percent are BMR housing. The challenge in meeting the RENA the next time around is that this time, there were a number of large sites that had pretty intensive development, particularly the Hamptons, you know, Valco, in any of the different versions. So, one of the challenges for the next RENA cycle will be, you know, how do you find... How do you enable 1,000, you know, entitle enough residential allocation so that you can actually generate, you know, 1,000 or more units? That is quite challenging. And so, many of the things that I had in my list were actually touching on that. But, you know, the primary one really was, you know, to think ahead a bit here, because the current... The current sitting council will actually be working on that, on that next housing element. So, there were a number of things there. I think I did want to say a bit about form-based code. That's, you know, that's a professional term that we use to refer to describing, you know, using a non-traditional metrics to describe what we build, the building form. That doesn't mean... In fact, it's interesting, because in some respects, Valco is an unusual case for form-based code. The place where you typically see the execution of form-based code today are things like the downtown of Modesto. I believe it was Modesto. Heard about that at the Planning Commissioners Conference, where there is an existing downtown. And the reason for the form-based code, and this is also the case, there's a number of places in the East Bay that do this. The reason for that form-based code is to maintain the appearance as it is today while new development is coming in. And so, you know, I think when we discussed this in the last meeting, you know, one of the places where I think that there's good applicability for this would be in places like the heart of the city. That doesn't mean that you radically change how the heart of the city looks. You know, part of that... Part of the form-based code could be to continue to maintain, you know, the area of, you know, the sense of being a tree boulevard, some of the setbacks in heights. And the question there just becomes, you know, do you need to make adjustments? Are there small adjustments, large adjustments, you know, for different areas? You know, is the area subdivided? Those are all things that can allow much of the current... The current kind of feel of that area to be maintained. We also heard that in a number of things here, you know, Montevista has a particular flavor. It actually has a special planning area, which has some restrictions, which are different than elsewhere. The Fair Grove area, the Eichler area, also has that. So, I think that there's generally a thing here that says, if there are, you know, if you want to have a kind of a localized flavor, that this actually may be the best way to execute that and to really think about it. I do think that an important... Heard about that at the planning commissioners conference, where there is an existing downtown, and the reason for the form-based code, and this, this is also the case, there's a number of places in the East Bay that do this. The reason for that form-based code is to maintain the appearance as it is today while, while new development is coming in. And so, you know, I think when we discussed this in the last meeting, you know, one of the places where I think that there's good applicability for this would be in places like the heart of the city. That doesn't mean that you radically change how the heart of the city looks, you know, part of that, part of the form-based code could be to maintain, continue to maintain, you know, the area of, you know, the sense of of being a tree boulevard, some of the setbacks in heights. And the question there just becomes, you know, do you need to make adjustments? Are there small adjustments, large adjustments, you know, for, for different areas, you know, is the area subdivided? Those are all things that can allow much of the current, the current kind of feel of that area to be maintained. We also heard that in a number of things here, you know, Montevista has a particular flavor. It actually has a special planning area, which has some restrictions which are different than elsewhere. The Fair Grove area, the Eichler area also has, has that. So I think that there's generally a thing here that says, if there are, you know, if you want to have a kind of a localized flavor, that this actually may be the best way to execute that, and to really think about it. I do think that in important part, heart of the city in particular is, is an interesting one because it is relatively, the thinking behind heart of the city is relatively old. It's probably twenty years, fifteen to twenty years old. Much of that thinking predates. There is one transit, transit path in Cupertino, one primary transit path, which is Stevens Creek Boulevard, which is the defining character for heart of the city. You know, De Enzo Boulevard to a lesser extent, and Stelling to a lesser extent, are also, would also be transit, you know, what would be referred to as high-quality transit roads. So I think that in those particular areas, looking at doing things where we take a more modern view, you know, those areas today have land use which is mixed use, including residential, and to actually, but it also includes a number of restrictions, unusual restrictions, which are things like, you know, if you, you may have a residential land use, but unless you have a housing element allocation, you can't actually build a residential there. So, you know, I think that looking at those things to make it a little more possible, again, I would cite the example, the owner of Scandinavian Design came here looking for an opportunity, well, he didn't come, he didn't come to the planning commission, but he came to the council looking for an opportunity to build homes, and this is not a lot of homes, I mean, I think he was talking about twenty or thirty. That's a, that's an example of the kinds of things where taking a newer look would allow, you know, it would allow the opportunity for some homes to get built there. And for us to actually, you know, we often, unfortunately, in planning here, a lot of times the RENA is treated as a maximum when in fact a minimum. So these are the best ways to achieve the, the full numbers. You know, and I think the other, the other one, you know, there are some other ones there, the citywide allocation table actually falls with that. We have, we have special areas, we have, we have zoning. Those things, those things can, can guide and, and control the amount of development that happens there without having to have a very specific, you know, site-specific allocation. Where you run into the, this actually, I think is actually the best solution to the problem of, you know, a particularly intensive site. The problem with the Hamptons is, you know, it's probably eight hundred million dollars to develop that. And, and that, that huge financial requirement is the kind of thing that makes them wait for the most advantageous moment rather than building it. And that, that formula will be different for every, you know, for every different place. So if you, if you entitle, if you entitle the opportunity, you know, so that it's not so strictly limited, there would still be a limit, for instance, a special area might, might carry a limit. So if there's a certain number of homes that were built in the heart of the city, you would, you wouldn't necessarily need to change that. But, but where they end up might be in different places, and I think that that's, I think that that's useful. Otherwise, I think everything else is probably pretty, pretty, pretty self-explanatory. Generally, you know, I was trying to take a forward-looking view toward not necessarily regular, not necessarily laws that haven't been passed yet, but, but certainly laws that, that are on the books and, and coming up. So, thank you.
Anybody else? I got a crazy one for a couple residents that I might add, since it's not necessarily listed here. But someone suggested to be, given the fact that we're seeing more drone deliveries in the future, and Cupertino is a high-tech city, that it'd be interesting to have a drone or some kind of a drone easement over, you know, maybe retail or commercial of an eighty-five-foot allowance or a hundred-foot, something like that, so something that's put into the mix to make it kind of interesting.
Yeah, I think in general, if you're thinking about forward-looking stuff, yeah, drones are coming. I think a lot of us are, are used to, are used to getting delivery via Uber or Amazon, the, the one-day thing or whatever. And it's just going to grow, so having some, some sort of conversation about that is important.
Okay, anything else from, otherwise, let's go to the public, see what we have. Oh, Kitty, you got more? Okay.
I just want to mention, I happen to live in the Fair Grove neighborhood, and we are R one E, and the housing bills among them, because we are not a, an historic, an historically designated neighborhood, we are actually subject to the housing legislation that's coming through the pipe because we didn't receive that. They just had essentially voluntary requirements that, for people to follow. And I'd like to just mention what our RENA table has in it. So for extremely low, very low, our projected need is three hundred and fifty-six. Our low income, which is fifty-one to eighty percent of the area median income, I believe I have that right, is two hundred and seven. Moderate is eighty-one to a hundred and twenty percent, that's two hundred and thirty-one units. Above moderate is over a hundred and twenty percent of A M I, and that's two hundred and seventy for a total of one thousand sixty-four. I'd like to have it clarified, you know, what was studied in the general plan E I R for these housing units across the city. And I think it was fourteen hundred total, but I, I might not be correct about that.
That was the, that was the allocation that was put out. Almost exactly fourteen hundred, to give some, some tolerance. I think that the.
Thank you. So I spoke to John Martire today from planning, and it looks like A D U's that we've had included are considered moderate income. So that is something that's promising for us because that is the, what they, you know, refer to as the teacher housing, that is that area. So we've had some good improvements in the A D U building, and also that's going to be on the agenda for Thursday's Housing Commission, right, so they will talk about that. I am not a big fan of form-based code as I've seen it because we have these allocations, we have a jobs and housing imbalance situation. And the other aspect is if, in heart of the city, if you switch to this form-based code, it looks like what you're doing is essentially making that entire strip subject to the housing bills, and the housing bills, you can have a mixed-use development go in, so you say they're going to have residential. As it stands right now, you can have a mixed-use development go in, and then have all sorts of magic math happen. So what you end up doing is worsening the housing shortage while you used a housing bill and enriched a developer in the end. And I wouldn't go around changing these, these things that we have heart of the city without looking long and hard about what's coming down the road.
So I, you know, I don't know whether we really want to have a lot of discussion on this, but I would say that heart of the city, the general plan land use designation includes residential, so it's already subject. It would, you know, who knows exactly the form in which these bills would come through, but they would already be subject to, to a streamlining in the, in their current, in their current form, across the entire heart of the city zone. And then also on the A D U's, the A D U's are an interesting one. I think I'm sitting in for the, for Alan at the housing meeting on Thursday, and one of the things that's interesting is that there was a decision, I don't know where that came from, that A D U's are treated as, are counted as moderate B M R, and I think that's actually, I think it's actually a bad policy. They're treated as an A D R even though they're not, they're not de-limited to have affordable, you know, to, you have to have a qualified affordable rent there. So, so normally, under, under B M R rules, you have a fifty-five-year restriction that would allow you to charge no more than a certain amount, you know, if it's a moderate unit, no more than thirty percent of eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the average income. The way we've done it today, the way that the law is written today, we count that as a moderate unit, but there is no restriction on the, on the owner to, to rent that at a moderate rate. So, and then the other thing that's kind of odd, I attended a presentation that talked about Palo Alto, looking at, and a number of these planning, planning issues, and so one of the things that, that they've done in Palo Alto, they, they kind of have an all-out effort to build enough, to, to build and entitle enough market-rate housing so that they don't fall into the fifteen percent, the fifteen percent S B thirty-five B M R streamlining. And so we actually, we're actually kind of going the wrong way with this by moving the A D U units into moderate. We actually, moderate is a very hard area to hit the allocation because there's no bonus multiplier. There's no density multiplier granted for moderate housing under the current law, so. So moderate will tend to be one of the ones that's very low in production. The A D U's will go into that bucket, not being able to qualify as to, to, you know, avoid S B thirty-five streamlining, and we don't get to count them as market-rate units even though those are what they are. So, and, and of course, market-rate units, we traditionally have hit the market-rate target. So, you know, I, I do think that, I do think it's important, it's very important to have, to have a future, you know, our future code and general plan address all the levels of B M R housing, you know, in a clear way. Maybe that one particular, that one particular thing about A D U's counting as moderate is probably maybe a bad thing.
I had a question. So for a moderate in Cupertino, what would be the rent range, like based on what metrics?
So, so the, the government defines a moderate income person to be, it's eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income.
And the area is city or county?
County, county of Santa Clara. So H D, H C D sets on a yearly basis, so right now for a family of four, the, the average, the median income is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So if you were, if you had a family of four going into a moderate unit, the, the range would be, you know, eighty percent of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then thirty percent of that because that's the affordable amount.
Around twenty-five hundred a month.
Yes, that's right, that would be right.
Okay. Well, I don't know the going rental rate for A D U's, but my guess is, is probably be less than that, but.
Yeah, that, that's true, the, you know, you'd be unusual, probably unusual to have a four, four family, a four-member family living in, yeah, six hundred square feet. Yeah, it, it is. The reason, the justification, I was actually at the last housing commission meeting as well, and we talked about this. The reason for that, there's a reasonable reason. It is that A D U's, by virtue of their small size, are, are, you know, can be viewed as affordable by design.
Yes. So would it make sense to put some constraint on it in terms of rental income when we approve an A D U?
I think if, I think what would happen is, in the future, if you build an A D U and you're willing to, you're willing to accept the deed limit, whether it's extremely low, very low, low, moderate, or, or market rate. If you're willing to accept that, then we should count it that way, and, and that will ensure the, that will ensure that a qualified person is there, you know, an income-qualified person is there and that the rent is, is affordable.
Kitty, you gonna say?
Well, would you want to incentivize that, and if you do, for how long? You know, that, that could be a whole another policy. I do want to just mention, and, and this is whether or not you want to make some alterations in the general plan, but for your rental residential developments in the housing element, page H twenty-five, you, we require that they provide fifteen percent rent for very low and low-income B M Rs. And then when you go to our B M R manual, which is resolution fifteen dash oh three seven, we then further specify that it's going to have a sixty-forty split, this is rental, sixty-forty split between very low income and low income. And then they slightly alter the definitions, so very low income is fifty percent of A M I, and low income is sixty percent A M I. And so you've got, we've kind of lowered the, the requirements, or actually made it more difficult for the developer. But is that, is there some wish to increase this fifteen percent to include your, your moderate income? And, and the, because we've defined low income at the sixty percent, do you want to go, you know, sixty percent and up? Is there, do you want to tackle that?
Yeah, I think in general, when I think of B M R, the first thing which comes to mind are the city workers, the teachers, the firefighters, and I would them to have the first, have the first chance to get access to whatever affordable housing we've proved because they're serving here, and they're city residents, they're paid by taxes. And I'm not sure how much of the existing allocation or distribution even actually supports them because my guess is that most of them will be in moderate or high-moderate months. And should we be actually targeting that first, that the people who are actually serving the city and the residents across the board? And what leeway do we have to adjust, to work with RENA and something to, to adjust those things, to, so that those allocations are more meaningful to the people who are actually serving her and whose wages are determined by the taxes we pay?
Along that, those lines, we're also missing the extremely low income that has been requested, and, you know.
The disabled for the.
Yes, right, and I, and I do have a question, I've had this question all along, is, are, how does, how do we legally have that specification for developmentally disabled? Because, you know, this occurred previously when they were discussing the developer agreement. Can you do that, and how, how is that done? So you could consider possibly making a recommendation regarding the sixty-forty and the fifty percent, sixty percent, and changing, you could change the sixty percent and do something where you're adding in the extremely low, possibly. And, and then increasing in our general plan, the fifteen percent up to twenty percent and adding moderate. So I think, you know, we should open that up.
There's actually reason for the existing, the existing regulations talk about very low and low, and they don't talk about extremely, extremely low or moderate. The reason for that is the density bonus, the density bonus law only talks to those two categories. So what happens if you build, if you build an extremely low unit, that actually counts, as far as they're concerned, as a very low unit, but you make less money. And moderate units don't, don't count toward the density bonus, so that's why, that's why those are. So, in fact, you're, you're quite correct. There, there's a lot, I think, when people think about what the kind of things would be beneficial for the city, when you talk about teachers, first responders, that kind of thing, there's actually no, currently no incentive to build that kind of housing, which is a, which is a problem. I think the way that this will get addressed, and, and this has certainly been the intent, I think it's been the intent of prior council as well, is that the next revision of the housing mitigation manual will include a discussion about all the five levels, which, when you include market rate, then there are five levels. So they'll include all the five, the five levels, and there may be some mixed table. You know, that was actually embodied in the, the Valco specific plan, actually did have, you know, fifteen percent the way that it would normally be done, and then five percent, the additional five percent, that was a twenty percent to qualify for tier two. The additional five percent was all moderate. So it could be done that way, there are many different ways to do it.
Kitty?
So in the specific plan, they mentioned a city bonus, which was, I didn't know this existed before then, so I actually would like to know where, where the, the rules are on that. I mean, are there rules for it?
That was, in fact, that was actually, it was an interesting thing, right? The, the specific plan tier-two formula intended to directly address the things that people don't like are the way the density bonus is used, particularly the, you know, the exemptions. So the city bonus, that you would have to qualify, you know, to qualify for tier two, you had to meet certain requirements, and those requirements included you waiving the ability to use the, the state density bonus law. So you, you are going to agree to a mix of twenty percent, you know, that included this five percent of, of moderate housing, and in doing so, you can't at that point say, okay, now I want to have thirty-five percent higher density. So they, they already pre-built the, the density as fifty units, which is roughly what, you know, what the density bonus would be. So that was the intention, it was. It was, it was a, you know, it was, create a different set of incentives that were very specific that you would get, you know. They set a height, you know, they said 120-foot height, and you can't, there's nothing you can do if you accept Tier Two. There's nothing you can do to make it 121 feet.
Okay. So how many units did they end up with in Tier Two? It was like 2668 and we had 2402 when they followed the density bonus and...
And for the purpose of this meeting, these are hypothetical calculations for, if you're looking at a plan, that's all. I'm going to move on. Let's get some resident comments.
Before you do, I have a quick question, just so I can scope the ADU discussion, which has taken way too long. How many ADUs have been built in the city in the last two years, Steph?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but...
Based on permanent activity, any...
It's in the report. It's in your housing report.
Is it a time? Is it...
It's in the, I would say it's in the hundreds.
So like a couple hundred units or...
I have to look into that.
Okay. I'd be interested to know exactly what that number is so we can scope what that is and what the predicted ADU volume will be because that kind of plays into all these calculations when you're talking about percentages and, so the number would be a good thing to have.
Yeah, we'll probably know in the next meeting. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to close it and open to public comment. First person here is Jennifer Griffin. While you're doing that, the Western Conference score is 67 to 52, Warriors to Blazers. Next, just for a few people here that wanted to know.
Yeah, my husband's home watching the Warriors. And Steph and his brother, I don't know if his brother's playing though because he's, Steph is out though. Steph is an amazing human. Anyway, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin and, oh, it's always interesting seeing things we're going to be discussing. So I'm going to say it right now, form-based code is a programming language and it's all Java to me. So I just assumed that form-based code went away and stayed out of our discussions, especially if we're going to redo the Valco stuff because it was annoying when it first came up and it just gets more and more annoying all the time. I like Heart of the City. I dedicated a lot of my life to it and I plan to do everything I can to uphold it. To me, it is one of our most valuable exports to Santa Clara and San Jose. San Jose and Santa Clara may be doing urban villages down Stevens Creek Boulevard, but when they get up to our end of the town, we have both sides of the road and they have to crash up against Heart of the City and we're going to push back. I happen to be on the eastern end of the city and we will push back. I think Heart of the City is the way to go and we have been having stuff from San Jose cram down our throats for the last, I think it's three or four years, ever since Dara Dawn blasted on the scene. And then we had all these lofty goals with urban village land in San Jose. And to me, it's a bunch of hokum. I think Heart of the City is the way to go. I don't want to live in a city that looks like urban village land. That's great. You know, I can live where I want to. Other people can live where they want to. But I am really glad and proud that we have Heart of the City. It comes down Cupertino and as far as I'm concerned, we will push it into Santa Clara and San Jose. I just wanted to talk about, I think we need to make sure that we talk about the impact of traffic, parking. The SB 50 bills are like, no, 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 you can't have any parking anywhere. Nobody's going to, they're all going to stop using cars and fly around on drones. Okay? That's like sci-fi land. We need to talk about the impact of future restrictions on parking. I don't know, Sacramento's got a lot of hot air up there and they're not thinking logically. Heart of the City, again, rules. Also, West San Jose, the north, the south part of West San Jose has gotten themselves in a big pickle because at El Paso, they have lost, the Luckys, they have lost two anchor grocery stores across the street from each other in the last two weeks. We lost Luckys at El Paso and we lost the Walmart at Westgate. That is poor planning on San Jose's part. How, they want to build out three urban villages over there. El Paso's going to blast into 5,000 housing units. How can you not have grocery stores? And I heard today, San Jose can't even pay for their potholes. Why are they even talking about having millions, billions of urban villages in Barriessa? Their roads are so bad, you fall in potholes and you never are found again. Thank you.
Janet Van Zorn?
Hi. First I'll ask if you have any questions. Anybody? Yes?
In terms of the needs of the people who want to occupy the ultra-low income facilities for people with development needs or development...
Developmental disabilities.
Disabilities, okay. Is there a preferred structure that you like to have a few of them around with a helper or some assistant living with them or are they able to live independently?
It's definitely preferable to have some of the units that are more than one bedroom because some of the people moving out of their parents' homes will need a 24-hour care assistant. And it's not really workable if that person doesn't have their own bedroom. So it's, it's good to have some of the units that are like that. There are also many of the individuals who will just be running on their own. Two and three-bedroom units are also an interesting situation because with two and three-bedroom units, then two or three individuals can rent together. And by doing that, they can sometimes get their rent lower than it would even be in an ELI unit. Some of the individuals are quite capable of, of having a part-time job because of their intellectual disabilities and their social disabilities. Most of the time, they're, they're not able to carry a full-time job. But the restrictions, there are serious restrictions on them too when they're employed because they have to give back to the government a dollar for every $2 they earn and things like that. And then there's a certain cutoff where you better be making enough money to cover what you were getting from the government because you'll lose it all if you go beyond that cutoff. And so these, all these things tend to restrict their income very low. So the, the ones that are not able to carry any kind of a competitive employment, they're only getting about $900 a month total. That's their income. That's for their food, their clothing, their rent, et cetera. So that's their situation.
Can you repeat that number again? 1,900?
Pardon?
900, right? Okay.
900, yeah. Pretty low when you consider what the, what the rents are. Speaking of that, since you were just talking about the ADUs, I would love to see you incentivize some ADUs for people with developmental disabilities. That's a really nice situation, having a unit of their own and being right next to a family that knows who you are, even if there's no caregiving responsibilities to that family. It's a good situation. Other questions?
Has, have there been some ADUs that have been designated for developmentally disabled that you know of?
Not that I know of. I think one of the ladies on the Housing Commission mentioned last month that she knew a family who was trying to, trying to go in that direction, I think for their own son or daughter, which is also a very good situation. So that's, that's a workable thing too. Can I just toss out something crazy and have you look into it? It occurred to me while you were chatting and, you know, the SB 35 project came up a few times. Would it be worthwhile for the city to find out whether or not it would be legal within that development to bargain with the owner to buy down some of the low, very low-income units to extremely low-income units with some incentive coming from the city to do that? Because that's a huge project and they're building a lot of affordable housing. And it might be one way to get a few units at a lower cost than it's going to be for the other units that we're trying to get. It's just a thought.
It's a great thought. It's out of our jurisdiction at the moment. I'll leave it at that for that comment.
I just wondered if, if the lawyers would know if that's, you know, because that's all driven by a law and I don't know how much weasel room there is within that law.
From what I understand, it's, we're under ministerial approval for that project, which means this Planning Commission doesn't have much say in it. The city staff can have a conversation with the developer. The developer doesn't have to make any changes or choices if it isn't truly an SB 35 project.
Right. And we could also try to talk to the developer, although that's not possible right at the moment. I think the dust needs to settle a little more.
You should be free to talk to them as you like.
But I was just wondering, in terms of the legality, it may be that they couldn't do it even if they wanted to. I just don't know. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Kitty?
I have some just basic questions. So Housing Choices, this is Bay Area Housing Choices, right?
Yes.
Yeah, B-A-H-C, okay.
No, that, the Bay Area Housing Corporation is another nonprofit. There are two nonprofits. One is called Housing Choices, it was originally called the Housing Choices Coalition.
Okay.
That's the one, that's the nonprofit that's looking for 40 units of ELI housing for people with developmental disabilities. There's another nonprofit called Bay Area Housing Corporation. They also help to create housing for people with developmental disabilities. Primarily, the portion of the, the whole pool of people with developmental disabilities that they are serving have far more intensified needs. They cannot live as independently. They, some of them have severe medical needs, severe behavioral needs. It's a whole different situation. So primarily, they're doing housing that is in modified homes. We do some housing like that. You asked about the co-ops and they also do some co-ops, but, but they have a care model that exists within their homes, funded again by the regional center, but it's much more extensive care than what the people in our group are looking for.
Janet, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion here, and it's going to sound funny, but I'd like to extend the deadline for input till Friday and make sure that we have something on the website so people know how to submit, just to keep our thing on public comment. Lisa, I guess you may have submitted a card that we may not have picked up? Okay, thank you. We'll get you on first. Sorry about that. Last public comment. We're still in public comment. Can we extend the, oh, we can make any motion we want and see what happens. You guys have the phone on it. Lisa, go ahead.
Hi. So I did send something, I only sent it to you, Ray, because we ran...
I just forwarded it to everybody.
Oh, okay.
But you can read it.
Well, I didn't want them to think they were missing something because I didn't send it. I just sent it to you because I ran into you in the city hall earlier and you asked if I had anything, so I, anyway. So I had gone over Commissioner Fung and Commissioner Moore's lists and there's some things I agree with, some things I disagree with. But there were also some things that I think I wanted to add that may not have been there. Actually, I'm just looking now. Dark Sky isn't here. One of them is to add language related to the importance of and the goal for Dark Sky because I get the sense that council and hopefully you are supportive of that idea. And so it'd be good to have language in there that actually supports it. And let's see, Heart of the City. The, the boundaries for Heart of the City, as I, as far as I can tell, changed in December of 2014. That was the last revision of Heart of the City from what the city tells me and what I could find. There is some lack of tracking, some changes in previous documents, so it was hard to tell what the previous one to 2014 was. But as I understand it, and unfortunately, I could not find the exact language, but when I was reading over this, these things, it was actually the Valco property owner in 2014 revision that was given a lot of opportunity to make changes to Heart of the City. And I can, I will find that sentence or paragraph again, that Sand Hill Property had some say in how it was going to be changed. And that is when the Valco site, as we know it, the 50-plus acres, was taken out of the boundaries for Heart of the City. It's no longer in Heart of the City. And I would encourage there be some discussion about putting it back. In the event that Friends of Better Cooper Two now win their lawsuit and we're back to square one, it would be really great if Valco was once again part of Heart of the City. That's one thing. It would be great if you could find some language to use that would protect solar rights in a variety of situations. That could help us in the future with what might be coming from Sacramento. There is a California Solar Rights Act originally from 1978. It's not exactly what we need as far as I can tell, but I, I really think, since the state is going to be requiring every new construction, single-family homes included, to have solar, next year, as I understand it, you know, if they're going to make you have it, they ought to be able to protect your use of it. And what they're doing in Sacramento is not going to do that. It'll be quite the opposite if they get away with it.
We're out of time, but go ahead.
Yep. One more? Can I do one more?
Yeah, one more.
I'm skipping some of them because you have them, but trees. Replacement trees that are required for development approval. It should spell out clearly that any replacement trees must be at grade in similar public areas as the trees they're being, they're replacing. I would hate for trees on the ground to be replaced by trees on a roof. That is not acceptable. But if the language doesn't spell that out, it may very be, well be what we get.
All right, thank you. You got a question, Kitty?
Lisa?
Yes?
Commissioner Moore?
Yes, thank you. May I ask a couple of questions? So when you say Dark Sky, do you have some idea, some vision of what kind of an ordinance or, you know, how would that get implemented?
No, but there's been papers written and, by the Audubon Society, and I'm drawing a blank on his name right now, the gentleman that keeps coming back to reinforce the need for it.
From, from the Audubon?
Yeah, somebody helping. What's his name?
Okay.
Leeds is his last name. Dashiel Leeds. He's a good reference and he's more than willing to help with that. And I think he has probably some models.
Okay. And then, so we would need to look into areas of the city where that would be implemented or is it going to be across the city? And then I did tour the Facebook roof, helped with a bird count.
Oh, lucky you.
A couple of weeks ago. It's actually very interesting, but they did some bird safe design there with fritting on the glass, the little dots to keep the birds from crashing into the glass. And then they also had striping, some opaque stripes, and they said that actually worked a little bit better. But, so I think probably we want to add in the bird safe design with the Dark Sky. And then what, what do you think is the benefit of returning Valco into the Heart of the City specific plan?
Well, I could be wrong, but the, what that would do is keep in place some limits that have been allowed to be changed, for example, specific plans. And I could be way off. I just, I agree with Jennifer. And Commissioner Fung said it was an old document, but the, the reason for it when it began was valid and it's changed a little. It's changed, well, actually, it's 2010, I think it's changed three times. I didn't track all the changes. I have that on my list to do. But why was it taken out?
That's kind of, yeah, what...
Because we see the result of it being taken out.
So it was removed and then, it was, it was within a specific plan already? Is that what you're saying? It was within Heart of the City specific plan?
No, it was December 4th, 2014 is the date on the, the, they don't even call it an adoption of this change. And that was the fateful night when all sorts of weird things happened to the Valco site in, in decision-making.
Was there an earlier specific plan for Heart of the City earlier than 2014?
An earlier specific plan?
For Heart of the City, yeah.
David, you might... David, you might, there was a 2010, then a 2012, then a 2014. And I don't know, before 2010, I don't know when the change was. I don't know whether it was labeled specific, because there's specific in it. Even in the 2014, which is the most recent, there's, there's a, there seems to be, there's three maps that I saw, two that sort of match each other, and one that sort of hints at, oops, we forgot to change this. But it's not a full map. It's just fuzzy.
There was also no specific approval when I looked back at that as well. So I think you might wanna check to see if it actually was approved. I'm still digging on that.
They gave a-
Yeah, it was. I mean, this was-
They didn't call it an adoption. What did they call it?
Something.
I don't know. I'll get back to you on that.
We'll take a look at that.
I'm a bit confused with all the dates flying around. So what, to simplify, is it like the Heart of the City plan, the current Valco site was a part of it originally, and it was taken out? Is that the summary? Okay, thank you.
The property itself was outlined in the border for-
It was once in the Heart of the City plan. It was taken out and exempted for specific reasons that aren't explicit-
In 2014.
And there are changes to the plan, if I remember.
Was Valco ever in the South Valco master plan?
So, you know, we're still in the middle of taking, taking-
Public input.
Yeah, public input. All right, let's close it then, and then have a conversation.
Okay.
Okay. So we're closing public input here. We'll have a discussion. And what I do wanna get to at some point here is a, is just a motion to extend public input till Friday, if we can vote on that, and then move to the conversation around easements. But that's all. We can save a lot of this discussion for when we actually go through the items, if that makes more sense to you guys. But, you know, if we can continue to discuss, if you feel that there's something to discuss here as well.
May I, are we allowed to comment on the, the oral communications, or actually the written communications that we were given at the start?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, because this is-
Okay, we're closing public comment. We are going back to conversations. And there is a suggestion for a motion at some point to extend public input on the table. So go ahead, Commissioner Moore and then Commissioner Feng. I think you both have something.
Okay, so the complaint in this is that no public outreach has been done. So what would appropriate public outreach look like, other than putting it on the agenda and having it properly noticed? What else needs to be done here?
I was gonna say, put it on the website. Maybe people can know where to email. I don't know if we've necessarily done that, but I don't think that would be, I don't know. Any other suggestions for anyone? What have you guys normally done for a public comment?
I think the challenge here is the short timeframe, even since the last one. Normally, if we're seeking public, it's public input, the first challenge is that this isn't really on the work plan, so the staff would have to get clearance from the city manager to expend time and money to publicize it and collect input. And then you would wanna have a longer, you know, I think this came up a little bit at the last meeting, about how far out it would be. This would normally be something that would be, you would have probably more than a month to go through the process of publicizing it and, and, you know, bring, and coming back. So it's, I think that that's-
I was gonna say, time is of the essence here, given the housing bills that are out there, and given the fact that the community has had these conversations for at least three years. I think, you know, I was just trying to extend the public input period to Friday, so that we could at least, you know, see if anyone else who's been watching this and hearing about it can get a chance to provide their input.
I have to agree that time is of the essence, especially with those housing bills. I was at the legislative, the Legislative Review Committee meeting today, and I think we're looking at early June. We need to really get moving on, on this.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend public input till Friday, that we put something on the website, if there's a way to do that, to say we're still soliciting objective standards. And then, you know, is there a second for that motion?
Actually, before we do that, this is actually Agenda's, is a study session, so I don't think we can actually do that. But we can give direction to staff to-
Okay, I'm gonna do that.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. Can we close this out and talk about easements?
So do we have a motion?
There's no motion. There's no need for a motion.
Actually, I do wanna comment on a couple of, a couple of things that came up here. The first part was that we actually did do the HCD Housing Production Report for 2018. It looks like there were 15 ADUs permitted in the last year, 59, there were 59 things in the category for the last four years, which are moderate, non-deed restricted. So those are probably ADUs, just, just to get an idea to that response.
Fifty-nine over four years.
Yeah.
We've also permitted more than that, but those are just ones that are built. That's why I couldn't give any-
Those are built.
Those are up to 2018, so.
I did wanna speak a little to the, to the Heart of the City changes. There have been a number of changes. They reflected, they actually go back much farther. If they reflected, there were, the Heart of the City specific plan was changed to conform with the changes in the general plan along the way. So one of the things that happened is, if you go back to, it's pre-2000, the, the general plan from pre-2000, there's kind of a North Valco area, which is everything north of 280, and a South Valco area, which is everything south. At that point, the mall, even though it existed already, the mall, the area that today is Main Street, and then all the rest of, well-
Before Rancho.
Well, well-
Those county.
Yeah, well, but it, but I don't, I don't know if that's, there's county space in Heart of the City, or, you know, space that now is-
There was not.
Right. So, so what, what happened was that the South Valco region was the, basically the mall and the place where Main Street and 19800 is today. So that was the next, the next turn of it. And then there was yet another turn, and this was actually in 2005, when Valco, the Valco shopping area was made separate from what's called South Valco, which would be 19800 and-
Main Street.
-Main Street today. So I believe that they were just conforming it to change with those, with those, with those changes along the way. And those would have been, those would have, those would have actually gone through a public process, although it could have been as much, it could have been as little as a consent item for the, for that modification. There was a, there was a comment about ELI and, and development of the disabled. I mean, it's possible, ELI, there's a, there's a category in, in, in the BMR requirement, which is for low income. And ELI is lower than, lower than low income, so it actually still, it still fits in that. So for, from the standpoint of the things that we might do in the general plan or in the municipal code, it doesn't preclude it. It just, you just have to convince somebody to do it. And of course, the SB 35 would be in that category as well, although, you know, that's not that we did really have anything to do with here. There was a, actually, a comment earlier about unit sizes and, and how, how do those map? And so it's an interesting thing, right, because this, we, this came up very briefly in the ADU discussion, that ADUs are treated as affordable by design. And that's an important concept. And in fact, it's one that's kind of important enough in Palo Alto, the recent changes in their downtown municipal code. They actually have established a minimum density requirement, which is not super high, but they have eliminated the maximum density requirement. And that actually speaks directly to the comment you had had before about, well, what size are they gonna be? The, one of the, one of the downfalls, one of the pitfalls, from a housing standpoint, one of the pitfalls of the existing metrics like density are that if I, if I, if, what I'm limiting you to is building a certain number of units, that is an encouragement to build those units as large as you can, as large as the FAR would allow you to build them. And so one of the things they're trying in Palo Alto is they're eliminating that. They're saying there is no high side limit. So you're not, that doesn't become an encumbrance. And if you choose to build small units, one-bedroom units or studios to create more units, then, then you can do that without, you know, then it's just a matter of the economics. That's something to consider, you know, whether that's, whether that's something that's workable, you know. They also, as part of that, you know, one of the things, one of the points that I think was touched on, both, both in Commissioner Moore and my comments, were around what is open space. And so just, again, as a, as a data point there, in Palo Alto, they actually include, a green roof actually does count as open space today. Again, as an incentive to, to produce, to produce more. So that's, that's very new there. So, thanks.
All right, Commissioner Moore?
Commissioner Takashi, do you have something?
Okay.
Okay, I just wanna mention SB 35, we're in the 50% below-market rate requirement category. And of those 50% that you provide, they need to be at 80% AMI. So there, and then when you get into our below-market rate program, we specify the 60-40 split, very low income to low income. So SB 35 in itself isn't requiring the very low income. And I, I still would, would press for having extremely low income written into our below-market rate manual. And I find it a little confusing between having our general plan show the 15% requirement, and then you go to another document. Well, actually, you kind of feed through the Cupertino Municipal Code and then into the below-market rate manual. And the below-market rate manual itself doesn't specify the percentage of affordable housing that you, that you need to provide. It simply says, when you provide it, it needs to be this way.
Are you making a suggestion to fix that?
Well, you could put the 15%, or if you wanna make it 20, you could, you could update that and put it inside the BMR manual, so it's all in one tidy place.
Yeah, why wasn't the BMR manual made part of the code itself? Like, why do we have to, like?
I don't know why it wasn't made part of the code, but it is a governing document, and I believe we are moving forward with a study going to city council to examine the percentage of the BMR that you guys are speaking about.
And as a procedural question, for adopting, for any change to the code versus adopting a BMR manual, are there different processes? Or is it like a code change is a more elaborate process because of which you want to keep something out of it? Or does the process, is the process similar?
So your question is, is it harder to get something into minutes for code versus getting into this as a manual?
Yes, because if, they're both binding, which I guess they are, then is there a reason or some logic behind why we want to separate those rather than have it in one place so it's not confusing?
The manual, okay, so in the Cupertino Municipal Code, they basically say, you have the authority. You have the authority to make this manual. Go do it. And then when you go read the manual, it's like eight chapters long. So it, I don't, I don't really think it's, if you, you put it into the municipal code, it's kind of an awkward and unwieldy type of thing. So I, I suppose they could, but I don't think it's gonna look right.
Okay. So, so actually- Actually, this actually came up in the last Housing Commission meeting as well. And so one of the things that's interesting is that the BMR mitigation manual is a recommendation. It is not, it is not a strict requirement at the same level as the municipal code, however, everything is ultimately approved by the council. So that there, you know, there's somewhat, some unity there. And in particular, the BMR manual has a lot of unusual wording, because at the time it was passed, it was not possible to have, it was not legal to have a BMR requirement on rental projects, right? So that's one of these things where they have some language that-
It reads funny.
It kind of picks it up, it picks it up in the event that the state law changed. But, you know, it, there were, the time when that one was passed, it was actually a very turbulent time for, for the, what's called the inclusive affordable requirement.
I'm sorry. So the Cupertino BMR manual is, was adopted by Resolution 15-037. So what you're suggesting is that it, those are merely suggestions in that manual. So when it says it shall be 60% affordable to very low income, so you're saying that that's just a suggestion, and the developer doesn't have to do it? Or the developer doesn't have to make the bedrooms the same number in the BMR units versus the market rate units? This is all just up in the air? You don't have to do it?
Those are all requirements, they're all requirements that need to be adhered to. Plus or minus, the density bonus law allows you exceptions. It would overrule things that are in the BMR mitigation manual. And then the other, the other part of that is that there are areas where it just has less detail. There's a requirement for rental affordability to carry for 99 years, but there are many, there are federal funding, federal funding sources that have a requirement for it to be 55 years. So in those cases, you know, if we're privately built, it would be 99 years. But if you used a low-income housing tax credit that had a requirement that the affordability be delimited for 55 years, then, then that overrides, in that point, the manual is treated as a recommendation.
While I have seen the BMR requirements taken as a concession, I question that. And I question it because you can have the market rate units go up to, you know, six-bedroom, and then your below-market rate units are then sitting at, you know, 300 and something square feet at a studio and with a, different finishes as well. And is that really-
It comes from the density bonus law. The density bonus law allows concessions where you have to, the, the-
They say concessions such as height and setback.
Well, there are concessions that affect the ability to produce the, the affordable housing.
I'm gonna move on, guys. I think it's a good discussion on how the laws interact. I think we can carry that over when we get to the priorities. I think it's good to get some different clarifications here. Can we bring our fellow city staff member who's patiently waiting there to talk about easements? And go to Agenda Item Number Three in New Business. And while we're doing that, the score is 95 to 81, Warriors to Trail Blazers. Okay. Item Number Three, General Overview by Staff of the Process for Altering Easement. So what is an easement? How do you alter it? Who gets to do it? Why? All that fun stuff. And we've got, go ahead.
Hello, Commissioners. My name's Chad Mosley, City Engineer. My presentation here is very brief. You had requested information about the process for altering an easement, and I have a quick breakdown of basically the ways to alter an easement that I'm aware of. Those ways include vacating an existing easement and recording a new easement. Additionally, you can amend an easement. And as a third option, you can vacate an easement on a map and record a new easement via a map. Each of those ways has different processes, you know, with the vacation, you record a vacation document, and then you record a new easement document in its wake. I'm not sure what further information you were looking, looking for with request to this, this item, so I've just kind of laid out what ways an easement can be vacated.
I think it's important to understand the authority of who gets to do that alteration, who approves that, and what that process is.
Understood. With, with respect to each of the various options, with vacation and recording of a new easement, the vacation is done at council level. The, the, accepting of the new easement can be done at staff level. I think the city council has approved the city engineer to accept those, so it would be me accepting those.
So if a new easement came by, it'd just go through your acceptance? It doesn't have to go to city council?
That is correct.
Okay.
With respect to, you know, amending an easement, that would typically go to council for the amendment.
Are there any exceptions to that?
There may be. I'm, I'm unaware of what those are.
But normally, there wouldn't be any exceptions to that?
This is typical.
Okay.
This would be the typical process under the Subdivision Map Act.
Correct.
Okay, so we're all under the Subdivision Map Act as the governing, governing document behind all this.
The Subdivision Map Act, as well as the Streets and Highways Code of the state, and then there may be some nuances within our municipal code.
Okay.
With respect to a map, the vacationing and the grant is done per the map approval process.
How does the map approval process work? Just more to educate the public as well.
Maps are submitted to the city, depending on, you know, what the map is, you know, the tentative map would come in for city approval. Once the tentative map is approved, you then go to the- Once the tentative map is approved, you then go to the final map process. And then the final map is approved.
Where does it touch? The Planning Commission and city council in that process?
With respect to subdivisions of five lots or greater, that would come to the Planning Commission for recommendation to council. Anything less than five lots is done, I believe, at staff level with community development directors' input. And then the tentative map is approved there, and then.
So the magic number is five lots?
I believe it's five lots, yes.
Okay.
For a point of clarification for the commission and the public, this, of course, is the process laid out in the Subdivision Map Act, Streets and Highways Code, but not the process that would be followed under other state laws that provide for an exception to that process such as SB 35.
Any questions? Anybody else? Questions on easement?
Can we go back to just something a little more basic for the public? Where you describe what, very simply, what easements are? And, you know, what, if they're, if they're not on a map, you know, where would you see these recorded, like in the title policy type of thing? You know, just going right back to the beginning, you know, to explain what this topic is about.
I, I don't have what the state definition of an easement. I'll give you more of a practical knowledge of it. An easement is typically a right granted by a property owner to a, a separate individual to utilize potentially a portion of their land or maybe under, you know, underground, or even in some cases, within the air. Those rights can range anywhere from access rights, drainage rights, utility rights. Easements can also be granted to public agencies for access as well as for utility rights.
So fire, PG&E, that kind of stuff?
Correct, you know, emergency.
Emergency response.
Yeah. So it's basically providing a right to an individual who does not actually own the underlying fee title. That's rough.
So when you, say you purchased a piece of property and you get the, the title report for it, those easements are all going to be in the title report. And you might have the legal description, and there, there might be a map that, that'll show you. So for instance, if you had an, an access easement, like an ingress egress easement, maybe you own a shopping center, and, you know, I think we see this often, that you'll have a, a bank within a shopping center, and it doesn't have access out to, out to the main streets. They've got to go through the shopping center and use another driveway going on to the, the rest of the shopping center's property. So that situation might have an ingress egress easement. So what happens if, you know, the rest of the shopping center, the owner decides that they want to redevelop it? And say that the bank owns that ingress egress easement? What then happens? What kind of negotiations might happen if they want to change that?
I just wanted to clarify that not all, and please, Engineer, correct me if I'm wrong, but not all easements are recorded. Some can be not, not appearing in a title report. Yeah. And also want to just make sure that we stick to the agenda item here and discuss general overview of.
General easements, we're talking about general easements.
Yes.
I do, I do have a question though. You did, you did bring something up that was interesting, which is, what, so there's certain state laws that the Subdivision Map Act don't apply to? What was that, what was that supposed to mean, what you were saying earlier?
The discussion about the processes that the engineer has laid out are the typical approval process for an easement under the Subdivision Map Act. But that is not how all easements can be adjusted or approved under state law.
So if you have all these other housing bills or ministerially approved projects, SB XX, whatever, would they not apply with the Subdivision Map Act?
So we discussed this item a little bit two weeks ago, and this is not on the agenda for tonight.
No, no, that's okay. I'm just trying to figure.
Given that we're talking about general overview, yeah.
Yeah, but general over on the easement, it doesn't, like, does this law apply to everything? Or there are ways that people could bypass easements in the?
So this issue, we just, I, I don't recommend we discuss tonight because it's a subject of litigation right now.
Okay, no, I'm just talking about general stuff, not, not, not that, in general.
So I.
Let's take a, a bill, a housing bill that has not passed. And what I'm just asking here is that, a housing bill that has not passed but is subject to ministerial approval, would they still go through this process for easements or any laws? Or do they get to bypass that? Like, let's say it's SB 1000 or something like that.
Right, if, if the law hasn't passed, it's not law yet. So I don't, I don't, can you state it another way?
Uh, let me state it this way. Are there any state laws that would bypass the Subdivision Map Act as passed today?
Yeah, if the law states that notwithstanding the Subdivision Map Act procedure, a, an easement shall be, or rather, a map shall be approved in a particular fashion, that would be a legislative determination that the Map Act does not apply.
Okay. But they're explicit about this, right?
They may or may not be, yeah.
Okay, I was curious about that, okay.
Was, was my question, okay? Can I get the answer to that about the shopping center scenario, just in general? You know, what, what goes on between the owners of these properties? Like, how does, how does the change happen? Is that a fair question?
Maybe you can restate the question since it was a little while ago, thanks.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so, so you have your fictitious shopping center, and say you've got the, a, a bank in the corner, and they have an ingress egress easement to get to the bank, right? And it's going.
For their drive-through ATM, so.
Right, so they, they don't have, they, the bank itself didn't have access to, you know, let's just pretend it's on the corner of two major streets. They don't have direct access, they don't have a driveway. So they, when they did the development, the, the bank property, they, they own it. And they have an ingress egress easement through the rest of the property, which does have a driveway. And let's say that the owner of the remainder of the property wants to redevelop, and they need to move that driveway. Or, or maybe they've got two driveways and one they want to go away completely. So how does that happen? Is there, is this a financial exchange?
Actually, before we touch on that, Mr. City Attorney, there's a situation in Cupertino that predates your being here. I don't know whether you're aware of it, but this is very similar to it.
I'm not aware of, of it. You mean, this hypothetical, because it's actually not a hypothetical, is the suggestion?
It's not hypothetical, okay.
Okay.
It's not, I don't believe it's hypothetical.
Okay, but it's.
It sounds like Marina.
If, if the question is, is how do two private parties amend an easement between them, which is how I hear the question, maybe it can be restated much more generally. City Engineer, can you answer how two private parties may amend an easement agreement?
So a fast food, fast food entity that's stuck in the middle of a shopping center, undisclosed, needs an easement to get out of it? Like, how do you exchange the easement? Or do you pay for it? Do you, I mean, is there agreement? Does the city get involved? I think that's kind of what you're asking, Commissioner Moore.
Right, and for disclosure, you know, I've written legal descriptions and drawn them, and I pretty much know how this process works. I'm just asking for clarification on it. Thank you.
No, understood. With respect to, like, the fictitious situation that you've created here, it's really between the two private property owners. The owner of the shopping center who owns the underlying fee title, who has granted that easement to the, the bank in this case, is responsible for providing continuous access to the bank so that they can continue, you know, functioning as a business. And with respect to relocating the easement or any hardship that may be upon the, the bank, that would be negotiated between the two property owners, whether it's financial, or whether the bank just says, no, that's fine, just let us use this strip of land while you redevelop this one, and then.
It'd be a handshake.
We'll hatch it back later, yeah. I mean, it really is between the parties.
But this is interesting. So this may or may not be something that gets recorded. So does that mean it may or may not show up in a title report? I'm just, just for education.
A title report only shows what's on the record. And an easement can, can exist between two parties whether or not it's recorded. It's an agreement between two private parties.
Any other questions on easements? All right. We go to the public? Okay, let's go to the public. Okay, we're going to go to the public? Jennifer Griffin.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and it's always interesting to learn about things like easements. And I appreciate the staff taking time to explain them. I wasn't exactly sure where we were going with this item, but I sort of kind of get the vein. But I'm always glad to find out more information, especially across our very large city with lots and lots of neighboring cities. Then again, we have another situation that I, as a member of the public, can certainly bring up, and then you all can decide whether you want to talk about it or not. And I completely understand this because we are going into no man's land here. We have, as far as I know, there are legal lot lines easements currently across the state, in Oregon and in Washington State, that are legally binding between property owners, private property, public shopping centers, et cetera, et cetera. But we have, for the very first time in the history of the western part of the United States, changes that could potentially come down from the alluded governing cities of each of the three states, Oregon, Washington, and California, that could override easements on properties. You have the potential, and I mean, I'm talking about the very real potential, that you have properties that are homes, that have existing legal lot lines easements, PG&E easements, AT&amp;T easements, et cetera, antennas, whatever. And you have a whole slew of housing bills that are, if they're signed by the three governors in Washington, California, and Oregon, that they could at one time completely override all of the property laws in the state, those three states. I don't think people have thought about this. What are we doing? What are the legal ramifications? If you come in and you have, let's take Portland. You have a lot next to Reed College, 5,000 square feet. And this 2001 bill gets signed by the new governor of Oregon, I forgot what his name is, he's in Salem. You could have that lot split into four. So what do you do in terms of legal lot lines, easements that go back to 1920? Has anyone thought about the legal ramifications of this? What happens to legal, legal easements? Do you not let PG&E in if you're putting four and tri and eight places on a 5,000 square foot lots? If we can discuss that, I would appreciate it. If we can't, I understand. But I, as a public member, am very scared and concerned about this because we have not talked about this. And Sacramento and Salem and, God, what is the capital of Washington? Olympia, they're not talking about it either. We need to talk about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone for that study session? Any other public, I don't think we have any other public comments cards, just making sure. Okay, I think we're good. Thank you very much, City Engineer. Looking at the agenda, I, I want to congratulate ourselves for actually being able to finish a little bit earlier, but we've got staff and commission reports and any other comments anyone else has. So Commissioner Takahashi, anything you want to add? Share with us over your last two weeks. Okay, Commissioner Saxena?
No, nothing else to share.
If I have anything, I'll wait till the end. Commissioner Fun?
See, I attended a number of activities. So this is, we're in the midst of Affordable Housing Week. Attended a number of activities, probably four or five different things. I participated in the Housing Choices Tour in Mountain View. It's really a pretty amazing, pretty amazing facility. It's a tiny, tiny, a pretty tiny lot of, I think it's a half acre, with a number of, it's 100% ELI with, for developmental disabilities. One of the reasons that that, that they did that was that the people who are, who are developmentally disabled typically will not have a driver's license. So this, this, this unit has zero residential parking. As part of the design, now, there is actually quite a lot of parking there for visitors and services and things. But it's a, it's a really great facility, it's really beautiful. And then, let's see, we did the volunteer fair.
Yeah.
And, and I attended the budget study session yesterday.
Okay, Commissioner Moore?
Okay, so I attended the Silicon Valley At Home Tax Credits Presentation, which was very informative about how to fund low income housing. And also some historic tax credits were gone over. I went to a SPUR housing meeting. And at both of these, Vice Mayor Chow was there. And we met someone from Eden Housing, who we'll be speaking with again, to get some more information about providing BMR housing. And I went to the Legislative Action Day in Sacramento a couple of weeks ago, where they went over the housing bills. And that was very interesting because we went into the Capitol Building, and it was completely packed that day. It was, it was interesting. I attended the Joint Cities Legislative Action Meeting in Palo Alto, which was between Palo Alto, East Palo Alto, and Menlo Park. And that was pretty interesting because you had 14 council members on the dais discussing the new housing bills. And as I mentioned earlier, I went to the Legislative Review Committee meeting today, and I want to bring something up. So if this is a topic that you are interested in, the new legislation, and not just the housing legislation, but there's other things. There's cannabis legislation, which is pretty interesting. There's actually something by Senator Weiner, I guess that would be SB 23, which people might be interested because it talks about auto break-ins. And it's, that's an interesting one to look up. So if you're interested in these, all these, the new legislation, which is out by Friday afternoon, 5 o'clock, you need to turn in email any comments on these bills. And that's due to the Legislative Review Committee. And their email is legislativecommittee@cupidino.org. And they would really like to have your comments. And they have, looks like they've contracted with Townsend Public Affairs, who, who is assisting, providing information about all of the bills. So you can email, again, thelegislativecommittee@cupidino.org. And if you have some questions, if you want to have more information about the housing bills that they went over, I'm sure they can provide it for you. Thanks.
Okay. I just have one comment. We've got a lot of housing bills coming our way. I think they're going to change the way our land use rights are. If people are interested in that, I think people should just take a look to see what rights are being taken away under local control. And get involved and get, you know, get your votes, voice, votes, and contributions in. So that's about it. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the meeting and adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? We don't need one, do we? All right, we adjourn. There we go.